... which is hands, one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody's present? Open it up for public discussion on any of the agenda items. If there's discussion on the agenda items, we'll move on. As for approval of the minutes for the Board of Supervisors meeting on September 28th.
Make a motion and we accept the minutes?
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
I abstained because I wasn't here.
Opposed? No. One abstention noted. Approval of the minutes from the special meeting on October 10th.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? No? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to go through all the correspondence for the month of September.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? No? Motion carries. I'll make a motion to approve the departmental reports as listed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? No? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills and payroll for the month of October.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? No? Motion carries. And our new business. Tom, do you have something on this Resolution 216L, 2016L, the CDL?
Yes, and I think the manager actually primarily responsible for bringing that to your attention, helped us prepare it, but she can explain that to you as well. It provides for exemption of the hours and the process to declare emergency conditions for your CDL drivers. It was recommended to the manager.
It was recommended by PISA.
By PISA. And manager passed that recommendation on to us, which is a good one to formalize the process that we document when those incidents occur.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2016L, a CDL resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? No? Motion carries.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2016M, opposing amendment to the local share assessment.
I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? No? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 137 in reference to the super ordinance in reference to the township parks.
I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? No? Motion carries. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 138, which is the HTC franchise agreement. Tom, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Just by way of summary, the outside council, while Cone's office did a great job in negotiating, they updated agreement with HTC. I think achieved everything they wanted to achieve in it. It covers the standard franchise fees, provides for any G network if desired. Reporting requirements, specification requirements, service requirements. Achieved the 10-year term that we wanted. It has what's called competitive activity provision, since you have two providers. It actually allows those to be kind of equalized over time. And it also provides for a site internet service agreement for use of free internet service and locations for the township. So all appears to be in order, has been duly advertised, and is ready for consideration.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? No? Motion carries. Then our old business. Okay, discussion items. I have one thing I want to bring up. And Tom, this is more, we're going to need your guidance on this. We have a bond on a road called Testa Road. There was some hauling coming out of there, the damaged road. They did come down and put a bond on it. And our Public Works people have been in touch with them, trying to get them to do the repairs, because they're done hauling out of there now. And they have been, the party has been less than willing to sit down.
Okay.
Since we have a bond, what do we need to do next to revoke the bond?
Well, I'll give them more. Mickey, Mickey and Mar, and we'll start the process of putting them on notice and if necessary, turn a trigger on that. Usually isn't necessary, but we'll start the process.
All right, because I know they've tried to talk to the gentleman. Actually, they had an appointment where the gentleman was supposed to come up here and sit down with Mickey and Bill, and he never showed up. So
We'll give them one last shot if we get their attention. If not...
Time to take the next step.
Sure.
Any other discussion items? Move on to public discussion, and before we open it up, Tom, you want...
Oh, I'm sorry. I almost underkind of a discussion item. Helped him into public comment. I do want to give an update on the Yonkers decision since the date of the original decision. The theme music. They, in first week of October, gave notifications to the manager and myself regarding initial site and looking around, worked on Baker. Also provided us with their tentative schedule of overall operations on October 4th. And at least as far as the trajectory is going right now, they have things set so that, and as we had asked them to strive to do, the completion phase is slated to center over the summer months. So we had asked for that, best efforts in that regard, and it's much appreciated. Looks like that's what we're at this point on target to get to. We did have a, there was a modification of some minor provisions of the decision. Received a request from, through the council on October 7th regarding asking for a clarification on what was meant by some of the, a couple of the provisions. One had to do with the actives, the 24/7 guards at the gates, I too. And the intention there was for that to be during the active drilling phase, not throughout the other phases. And went back and looked at the application and the notes and the hearing stuff on that and whatnot. That is correct. And then second, with regard to the trailers for supervisory personnel only, had in, as I had it drafted, had limited not just the number of folks, but the number of actual trailers, which would cause the folks to be cramped into two trailers. So ask whether there could be relief on strictly saying as far as the number of trailers versus the personnel. And there is the registration requirement, so we know that they're there. I indicated that they should put that request in writing to us. And then one other clarification was talked, asked about was regard to the intent and the scope of the total blackout that we had talked about. And with regard to that, if recall during the hearings and whatnot, and in my explanation, given at the time of the annunciation of the decision, the total blackout wide, township wide along the school routes was during the active drilling phase. And so anyway, I had asked them to submit that in writing, those in writing to us. The first two items, by way of modification. And the other was felt we could deal with through a letter of clarification. So that request was received in writing by me on Monday, 10th. You folks had already a special meeting scheduled to deal with a bid opening unrelated to this. So I brought it to your attention at that time, and you considered it and acted on it at that time. So those two provisions were modified. And again, discussion was had about the clarification on the total blackout. So that, there was a revised, the main decision issued that, which we did at that time, given its mundane nature with the intention of obviously sharing that with the public upon its adoption at this meeting. So that said, by way of clarification on the total blackout thing, and again, if you listened to the hearings and the plan and my explanation at the time of the decision, it was intended for that, the total blackout period with regard to the, that was going to convoy here and all that stuff. There wasn't an expectation on our part that there'd be total township-wide blackout during, certainly the pre-operation, fortification of, you know, rebuilding Baker Road or the onsite construction that we believe fell under the heading of our general just coordination to minimize conflicts. You know, still was the expectation that they would, as appropriate, do that. So that said, and if you like in that context, I can address probably maybe preemptively a little bit. With some folks, I anticipate here will comment on, on the first day of operations, which was the pre-op road fortification operations on the 12th. I woke up on the 12th, my anniversary, to calls from Aaron or manager with some complaints being received about chaos, buses forced off the road, went to the side of the road, equipment piled up on Fort Cherry Road, blocking all of the access to the school district, pushing buses off the road, compromising the kids' safety, using improperly cowden as a staging ground, and even fears of using improper water to mix cement with concrete. We, we were immediately in touch with, got the facts of what happened down there, and are satisfied that while minor logistical five-tentennium glitch in timing had occurred or through some coordination issues that could have been improved, very in perspective, was a minor first aid glitch and not a violation of our terms of our, of our conditions of approval. And basically, what happened, just by way of explanation, is the first step was to fortify Baker Road. Okay? And to get on the field of play, so to speak, you have to start in the end time. And so, and had it been discussed in more detail, it would have been in the application, it would have been a mundane, oh yes, of course, we need to use kind of 75 or 100 yards of lawn. Because otherwise, the end zone's Fort Cherry Road. Can't stand in the middle of the route, so the first day of operations, in order to get on the field of play, to start the first 10, 20 yards of Baker before you get down to the 50-yard line, obviously have to start in the end zone, need to be on walnut. Okay? So that was the, what, the reason behind what happened, was they needed to have a day of operations just to put things on the side of the road on walnut, so as to get onto the field of play and not have Fort Cherry Road actually, you know, bottled up in the noon time. The only place, let me finish. So that is the backdrop of what the logistical thing that happened that morning. Under details, details. Of course, it's usable, and it's already covered. We have a backup bond that covers unforeseen use of the road. Secondly, it was logistically okay with us, and made sense that they did that. With regard to a five or 10-minute, you know, glitch and that, from what I understand, one bus was wanting to off the road, had a pause while some traffic went by, and somebody was trying to do a three or four seven-point turn to get up on the walnut. Otherwise, that was all that happened that morning. With regard to other matters, and it was dealt with by, quickly by the manager and myself in communication with school personnel, range personnel, finding out what happened. And in spite of that, and frankly, these flares of water, probably not worthy of comment, obviously using water to mix cement down there, it's probably about as much a bicycle to five yard pocket on the road, changing a copper or whatnot. The process actually by which they did the operation that morning actually minimized. I wasn't aware, but for folks' information, usually I'm used to people milling the roads, taking the stuff out on the truck, and then coming out and building the road. What they were doing down there, reason why it was a water truck, cement truck, and their trucks is they actually take the millings, grind them up, and right on the spot, mix them with cement, new water, and put them back down and make the roads right in place, which minimizes the number of trucks coming in and out to do things, and actually does it more efficiently, builds a really hardened road right in place. The use of, the use of cowden as a pull-off area was not contrary to any kind of staging. When we talked about staging in the operations for the active drilling and having the trucks come outside the township, that was clearly intended to be the staging for the fracking operation and the convoy truck, trucks in and out. Frankly, we were okay with, and are okay with, the use of the, using that as a pull-off point, because it minimizes them bringing more trucks in to the work site until they need it, and they can pull off and pause at cowden. And it's between the site and the way out of Dodge is between, as opposed to between the site and the school. So that was actually without, in our minds, consistent with minimizing traffic conflict. So, and in addition to that, it was backed by the bond we already had. In response to that, the council for range cooperated with me in actually amping up the language in our road bond language to cover any kind of unforeseen circumstance when something like this comes up. And in addition, if something like that comes up, and it's not an emergency where you don't have a prior ability to do so, we go into the agreement that they have to contact our manager in advance, and then she will give the permission in any conditions or any micro blackout or any kind of traffic stuff, that has to be done to dealt with that.
Excuse me, can I please make a comment?
I live out of Florida, if you might, I believe...
I'm signed on there that I can make comments.
We have not asked for a comment.
And if you have not asked for public comment, if I ask, you have the patience. Nikki La asked me to do an update, I'm going to update, and give my update, and I think he's going to... A little decorum.
Well, seems like an awful lot to me.
So having said that, we, it was a minor logistical matter on the first day, it was dealt with. We took measures in response to it to tighten up controls and minimize any possible recurrence of those sorts of events and enhance cooperation and that sort of thing in the future.
All right, we will open it up for public comment. As we stated last time, hold your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and your address, and if you're going to speak, you either have to be a resident of Mount Pleasant Township or have a child in Fort Cherry School District.
Is that written somewhere?
Who wants to speak?
I want to speak. I, I don't understand. My name is Joy Deskiner. I'm a 1011 Johnston Street McDonald kid. My grandson goes to that school. My grandson had been in that accident. I don't know why they chose right at the school to put these gas wells and this oil stuff that goes on, because I understand that there's no, no way to know how much damage it's going to do to the people around it. And also, I don't understand why those trucks were even on the road when they were, because they weren't supposed to be on the road when the school buses were out delivering the kids to the school.
I just explained to you that under the decision, that total blackout could not apply to these active drilling operations.
Why?
Because it wasn't considered necessary by the board in the context of their decision. What we asked for is appropriate controls to, can handle micro situations when they occur.
So you're not concerned about the kids, it's all the money? Is it all the money?
I don't believe that's what I said, ma'am, in all fairness.
Well, I, it looks to me that's what it is.
And this was under the pre-operate, road operations fortification. And to put things in perspective, first of all, there was no accident that day. I explained what happened. Was there, if there would have been 10-minute difference in when the occurrences happened, actually, there would be, have been no interaction between any school bus and that. A couple unforeseen's happened, a couple things that could have been better planned happened, but what happened was a bus had a pause for a moment while they were going by. There should be no expectation that in the non-active drilling phase, that we're not going to see, pass, traverse trucks on the street.
That's what was agreed to at the last meeting.
That was not what was agreed to. And if you were here when I explained it, I explained it.
Oh, I was here.
And if you go back and listen to the tape, which I did, I clearly explained that the total blackout was going to be, and that was the board's intention, during the active drilling operations. Okay? That is clearly was what was stated when we issued the decision, and that was the intent of the decision in that regard.
Why does all...
With regard to the road operation, that road, that road operation was no different than if Mickey was up or a peddler up.
Let me stop there a second. My son's bus goes on Baker Road. That bus has stopped longer for cows on the road, because they break out of the fence on a weekly basis.
And they're a lot harmless, more harmless than some of these trucks.
Than, than these trucks. That, I went by there that day and thought, now granted, I wasn't in any of the executive sessions or any of the decisions on this. I went through there that day and thought, they're starting on the road, it's road construction. I go to work now, and I got to take a detour because of road construction. There's Fort Cherry school buses from this district that have to go around construction now. It was road construction. It had nothing to do with the well itself. That's what I don't understand.
Why was range resources trucks there?
They were building the road.
They're rebuilding Baker Road to get to the well site. It had nothing to do with the well site itself.
Under the decision, there was...
Not one thing to do with the well site, other than rebuilding the road.
They have to fortify Baker Road for us. Now, we could have had our DPW department do that and then reimbursement, then it would have been Mickey and his crew out there that, you know, would or would not have somehow made your buses pause. And again, we appreciate what happened that day, and it's, it was, and in perspective, if we can have some perspective, no child was in danger. And it's, and, and I don't think we, we should be in the business of scaring kids needlessly about these sorts of things. There could have been Mickey and his crew, the folks that were cleaning. You know, my street all summer, they're rebuilding my line, and we went up through middle pavings, the flaggers busted our kids by, and the school buses, and finally, people went home with their life. This road, this is the same construction that would be going on if this was on our regular road improvement schedule. And from time to time, Mickey probably has helped people off by, you know, the buses and how to fly them by. I'm sorry. Okay, but perspective wise, that's what happened. And I explained to you the moment Terry overlapped, what you wish wouldn't have happened, but did happen, and wasn't a huge deal in the steam something. And in fact, I talked with Mrs. Tom, and I think we agreed that night. I thought that the next week, that the water was no big deal. The bus slaps was very minor and not a big deal. And it was ironic, I'm going to see with the son, I had a view to her when we talked, and it wasn't a big deal, that the buses being held up. And when I explained to her about what actually happened, and the things I'd happen to get on the field of play and all that, found it quite reasonable and agreed the steam thing's a very small thing, but actually a nice exercise on the first day, because we basically had a fire drill engaged with the range and our manager, and had basically a fire drill drill with a very small thing. They gave us an exercise of maybe what would happen when some more serious, actually serious at all happens, and when there is cause to have concern. We deal with things as it comes, and we deal with them proportionally and recently. And we went above and beyond that, I believe. We amped up the agreements in response to that, and actually range, who we told, could continue to use cowden, because that, in our minds, is actually helpful to traffic minimalization. We also sent them communicate what we expect to occur, even in the non-total blackout period in terms of enhanced efforts to minimize, and not even have incidents, however minor this was, occur if at all possible. And that's how we, the administration, could respond to this situation.
Any other comments?
I have one. Kathy Lodge, 2279 I Drive, Baltimore. I wanted to find out, I know you approved the correspondence, but Erin, was there any Act 14 notifications that need to be identified that came into the township?
All the correspondence is right here. You mean, just in this month alone?
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
What specifically you're looking for?
Well, any, any of the Act 14 notices, you, you plump them all together in a correspondence pack, which I understand is to, you know, make things go quicker, but were there any notifications that are public? I mean, the Act 14 notifications are supposed to be read out to the public, so people are aware of them. Is there anything that came in that...
No, not this month.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
I didn't know they were supposed to be read to the public.
Yeah, they are. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, me. I have a copy of each of this for each of the supervisors. This is to protect our children, taking our stand on what happened on October 12th. I'm Jane Worthington, and I'm running with Protect Our Children and PA Clean Air Council, as well as MOMS Clean Air Force. I see the events of October 12th a little differently than Mr. McDermott does. I see that under school traffic coordination with blackout periods, in addition to complying with the approved traffic plans designated route as approved above, the range resources, its contractors, its subcontractors, and other suppliers shall at all times coordinate all heavy traffic with the hours of school bus operation. So to minimize the conflicts, and range resource specifically agrees to impose appropriate morning and afternoon blackout periods in order to totally and restrict any heavy truck traffic within the township during those periods of time in which the Fort Cherry area school district schedules morning and afternoon bus drop-off and pickup of students, or during other special events, such as a football game. Now, the way that I see this is any, all, other suppliers, subcontractors, contractors, pretty much covers everyone, pretty much covers everyone at all times. Now, we ask for some very specific conditions for the safety and the welfare and the health of our children. And we went to pretty great lengths to try to get these conditions imposed, and you've guaranteed us by imposing these conditions on this paper, that those conditions are to be accounted for. I feel that range resources is accountable for the incident on October 12th. We have photos and videos, as you well know, specifically showing that the road was totally 100% blocked. A school bus was held up, other school buses were passing tank trucks, water trucks. Okay? You may say that this is a hiccup or a small incident, but this is the first incident on the first day. We've tolerated this for 10 years. We have children that we're trying to protect. We don't care about money, we don't care about leases, we don't care about coordination other than coordination around our children's schedules. These are conditions that are as good as a contract, not just between you and range, showing that you are the supervisors and that you have the control of the township, to say, this is what we want to happen in our township. This is also a contract of trust between the parents of Fort Cherry School, the supervisors of this township, and the judicial system. This should be enforced. A notice of violation should be served. There is no question that there was a notice of violation. There's no question at all.
There is a question.
No, there's, no, no question. As he, they are another supplier, they are a subcontractor, or they are a contractor, depending on how you want to look at it, and there are blackout periods. And it does say any, all, and totally. That pretty much covers everything, so I don't think that there is a question.
Well, if you listen to what I said in the last 10 minutes, or at the time of the decision, then, and when we spoke, and you said you understood when I spoke with us, we bought it, then you would understand that that is not the import of the decision, which I wrote. And by the way, that condition was not at the result of a submission or demand by you or anybody else. That was written by me with margin orders from this board, in part enhancing the plan that range actually proposed to us that I amped up. Okay? I overwrote, actually, the intent of the wording of that phrase, and actually clarified that. Go back to the night when we issued the decision, and listen to the tape. I told the whole room when I explained the decision and exactly that term. Yeah, or listen to what I said, that was during the active drilling phase, that we intended the total blackout to apply. the total blackout to apply, okay? And we, and, and I got clarification on that again. And then when we met and talked about, in the, in the, before this incident even arose, when the applicant asked for clarification from us in the intent of the total blackout period, we gave that to them before that even arose, okay? Having said that.
Is this the language though that they agreed to?
This is the, this is the, it's not, this is the, it's not an agreement.
These are the conditions which are signed.
Excuse me, she asked a question, do you want an answer? The decision of the board is the decision of the board.
No, no, what did range agree to? You, you've said you've created this language.
It's our decision. By not, by not, they agreed to adhere to it. The administration with the guidance of the board enforces that decision. We also interpret the undecided decision that we wrote with them. Number one.
My question is, is this language that she just read, the same language that was part of the conditional use of her?
It is the conditional use of approval, okay? And our, that's right. And the wording that she just read, okay? The condition that we have with regard, there's two aspects to that. We, 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 we expect them at all times to try to minimize traffic conflict generally, okay? During the active drilling phase, okay? And I'm, and let me just say one thing. I will read the explanation that I gave to range the day after this happened, that our expectations on the future jive with the explanation that I gave during the night of the decision and it is the intent for board's decision is consistent with this explanation, which is this. While the township does not expect a total township-wide blackout out of all vehicles passing through on the way to or from the site on the designated routes during Baker Road work and site preparation activities, and while we appreciate that unanticipated minor overlaps can happen during road repair operations, we do expect under the general heading of avoiding and minimizing conflicts that measures be taken to be employed together with appropriate, what I call micro blackouts, usually entail an only brief and reasonably manageable time and coordination rest necessary and a general sensitivity in making sure that all contractors, truckers, and flaggers know to give priority and preference to passing waters and especially school buses and school transportation as work proceeds.
But aren't you changing right there what was written right here? That's your opinion, that's your decision. Are you not changing what was written right there?
Nothing was changed.
Nothing was changed, because they clarified the intent of the board that issued the decision. And that was communicated to range actually before this occurred verbally. We were going to exchange letters to clarify that because that was the import and the intent of the decision, which by the way, this decision that this board wrote is extensive and its extensiveness was duly noted by the D E P. And it has far-reaching and wide-ranging conditions on it that we have and will administer. We, the administration, and in, with consultation with me, the solicitor, about the facts and the code officer, and getting the facts of actually what happened on that ground on that day, determined, A, that there was no violation that occurred and that the minor glitches, you want to call them hiccups or whatever that occurred in the overlap were something which we deal with in developers all over the time and in businesslike fashion. And when things need to be, notice the violation we do. And things need to be dealt with administrative, let's amp up our cooperation and, and enhance how we're doing things fashion, that's how we do it and that's what we did. And we were comfortable with that.
Each of you are comfortable with the fact that there is no notice of violation because you've changed the language in your own? Okay, well, I would like to know, I'd like to question who your contact is that is giving you?
Three minutes are over.
No, no, you.
But she was already over three minutes, whatever he.
I'd like to know who your D E P contact is.
It was up before Tom started talking.
D E P contact is, who is endorsing this?
Jane, you're done. You're done. Three minutes is up.
Then we'll continue on to a higher court.
It is, I'm serious. I stopped it when Tom started.
We'll take it to a higher.
Yep, we'll take it higher.
Any others? Public comments?
Please move to 76 Marilla Road. I would just like the board to know if there's any trouble I had on the school bus today with my call line, okay? That's all I got to say.
And that's funny?
Anybody else? We're going to have an executive session after we adjourn the meeting for legal matters. We will not be reconvening to take any actions. Make a motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion in a second. Motion's been made in second. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries.